Okay, Matt and Mike, I'm putting you on the speakerphone right now for the PMR.
Awesome, thank you, Diana.
Good evening. I'd like to call the order this Monday, November 23rd, 2020, Carmel Clay School Board Meeting to Order. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Board President Mike Kerschner is attending by phone. All other board members are attending in person.
Thank you. Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome those in the audience and those who are watching to our November Board Meeting. This week, we will celebrate Thanksgiving, and for most of us, it will look very different than years past. But everything has looked different this year. However, what has remained constant is the incredible work and devotion that our CCS staff has to our students. To say that they have risen to the occasion is an understatement. So on behalf of the Board, I would like to say to every administrator, teacher, and staff member, this Thanksgiving, we are grateful for you. I will now like to move to consent. May I have a motion to approve the consent items, which will be personnel report, claims, payroll, approval of gift applications, student handbooks, and the minutes of the regular session of October 26th?
Go move.
Second?
Second.
Second, Leila. We will now vote. Please vote by raising your hand and verbally. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, sorry. I'm still new to this. Yes.
I just would like to say, the student handbooks, they've been redone, and I'm very excited that they're following the same format, and they're going to be easily accessible on the websites for the parents. And this is just great. And all of them have been redone, and so it'd be neat for everybody to see. Thank you.
Thanks, Pam. Anything else? All right. Let the record reflect five in favor and zero opposed. Motion carries. We will now move to our discussion item, redistricting. Although many of you have read the information online, this is the first presentation of the preferred plan to the Carmel Clay School Board. I would now like to turn it over to Mr. Roger McMichael and Mr. Matt Sacks, Senior Associate Director with Cooperative Strategies.
Thank you. I will begin by showing a video presentation that Matt put together. And it's been out and available for about a week, but as you said-
Is it an icon?
Yes. But as you said, this meeting will be the first time it's been presented at our public meeting.
I would like to thank the Carmel Clay Schools Community District for their cooperative strategies. Hello, my name is Matt Sacks, and I'm with the Cooperative Strategies. I would like to thank the Carmel Clay Schools Community District Administration and the School Board for allowing this opportunity to present the Preferred Redistricting Plan. I would also like to thank the Carmel Clay Schools Community for their involvement in this process through focus groups, commenting on bug surveys, and designing new members. It is clear that this community is passionate about their schools and their students. This slide outlines the process of the Cooperative Strategies to Carmel Clay Schools to follow in developing the Preferred Redistricting Plan, which was released to the public on November 16th and is being presented to the School Board on November 23rd. Listed here are major milestones and important dates in this process, which we'll be described in further detail on the following slides. The following redistricting criteria were approved by the School Board during the September 29th meeting. All criteria are to the greatest extent possible and in no particular order. Students will be assigned to their closest school. The school facilities can be balanced relative to capacity, taking into consideration the demographic study information. Neighborhood subdivisions will be kept intact. Entire elementary schools will transition to the same middle school. These criteria were kept in mind when developing official draft scenarios and developing the Preferred Redistricting Plan. Data was collected and compiled from the school district, city of Carmel, and Hamilton County to use as a baseline for developing boundaries in our schools. This includes school capacity and enrollment data and geographic information systems, or GIS, data such as school points, attendance boundaries, subdivisions, and road numbers. This data helps Cooperative Strategies develop preliminary scenarios to present to focus groups for their initial feedback. The GIS software helps us determine how many students reside in each attendance boundary and compare to school capacity data to look at which schools are over or underutilized. It also allows us to look at potential boundary changes and calculate the resulting changes to facility utilization and the number of students impacted. Cooperative Strategies met with their partners in focus groups on October 8th, 9th, 12th, 13th, and 14th. During these meetings, an overview of the process and background data was presented. Attendees responded to some general questions regarding redistricting and then gave feedback on specific boundary scenarios. Each of the scenarios that was presented as part of the community survey were modified to incorporate feedback from focus group participants. In addition to focus groups and the online survey, community meetings were held on November 4th and 5th at the Carmel High School auditorium to collect additional feedback from the community. A short presentation was given, and then there was opportunity to provide public comments. Approximately 80 people attended over the two days. Following the community meetings and closing the online survey on November 9th, feedback was reviewed and compiled into a report. The feedback received from the online survey and the community meetings was considered for developing the Preferred Redistricting Plan. The Preferred Redistricting Plan is being presented and discussed with the School Board on November 23rd. The School Board will take action on December 14th. We received 3,069 responses and over 5,000 comments in the online survey asking for feedback on three boundaries scenarios. The common themes we heard from the community were that the middle school boundary needed further review. Some travel times for middle school students were a concern, especially crossing 31th and Creekside Middle. With 100% elementary to middle school feeders, the resulting imbalance of middle school utilization was also a concern. Also, to attempt to impact as few students as possible. Disproportionate free and reduced lunch percentages at one to two elementary schools was a concern in some of the scenarios. The map is tabled in this slide to detail the elementary and middle school boundaries for the Preferred Redistricting Plan. The shaded colors show the new elementary boundaries. And the orange outlines show the current middle school boundaries. The green outlines show the current elementary school boundaries. The new Clay Center Elementary Boundary is displayed in white yellow, which is made up of portions of the current Blackberry Boundary, the current Town Meadow Boundary, and the current Orchard Park Boundary. The remainder of the Orchard Park Boundary is split between Town Meadow, Carmel Elementary, Forestdale Elementary, with a small portion going to Woodbrook Elementary. Portions of Forestdale Elementary are also moved to Woodbrook Elementary. And the very northern portion of the current Forestdale Elementary is moved to Mohawk Trails. It requires a new portion of the Mohawk Trails to Cherry Trees. A small portion of Cherry Tree Elementary moves to Carmel Elementary. And portions of College Road Elementary are moved into Westfield Elementary. The new Clay Center Elementary will be into Creekside Middle School. And Forestdale Elementary and Cherry Tree Elementary will flip middle school feeders to Forestdale, now being into Carmel Middle School. And Cherry Tree Elementary, now being into Clay Middle School. Elementary living utilization ranges from 76% at Town Meadow to 93% at Smoky Row. And middle school living utilization ranges from 79% at Carmel Middle School to 102% at Clay Middle School. 65.4% of elementary students reside in the boundary of their closest school. And 85.6% of middle school students reside in the boundary of their closest school. 1,537 A-5 students changed elementary boundaries. 762 6-8-6 students changed middle school boundaries. This map highlights the areas that are changing from the current elementary attendance area into which attendance area it would be assigned in the Preferred Redistricting Plan. This page outlines the benefits of the Preferred Redistricting Plan. The overall number of students residing in the attendance boundary of their closest school increases from 58.7% of elementary students and 83.9% of middle school students in current boundaries to 65.4% and 85.6% respectively in the Preferred Redistricting Plan. 81% of students in the new Cherry Tree Elementary Boundary are closer to Clay Middle School. 57% of students in the new Forestdale Boundary are closer to Clay Middle School. A large portion of the current Orchard Park Boundary was continued to be zoned for Carmel Middle School. Overall, there is more balance in elementary utilization, and overcrowding has been eliminated at Westfield Elementary and College Road Elementary. And utilization at Woodbrook Elementary increases from 62% to 84%. All elementary schools continue to be 100% of the middle school, under the Preferred Redistricting Plan. This slide outlines the recommended exceptions to the Preferred Redistricting Plan. Next year's fifth graders will be allowed to finish at their current elementary school. Next year's seventh and eighth graders will be allowed to finish at their current elementary school. Next year's fifth graders from the Orchard Park Boundary will be allowed to choose any of the schools that Orchard Park is affiliated with. These are Carmel Elementary, Clay Center Elementary, Forestdale Elementary, Town Meadow Elementary, and Woodbrook Elementary. Students from the Orchard Park Boundary being redistricted to either Creekside Middle School or Clay Middle School will be able to choose between Carmel Middle School and the newly assigned middle school. This exception will continue to affect them. It should help balance utilization between middle schools. For all exceptions, transportation is not included. For the additional details or to re-watch this presentation of the Preferred Redistricting Plan, please visit the project website at www.lwrc.com/carmelclayschools. If you would like to provide a comment on the Preferred Redistricting Plan,
So with that, I would like to mention that Matt is with us via telephone, and so at this time, we will attempt to respond to questions that the Board may have first.
Thank you. Do you just want to start at the end with Pam and then move our way down?
Okay. Um, yes. This has been an interesting...I've had a very hard couple of weeks, as you all have as well. I have a statement I'd like to read. "I've been part of many redistricting plans during my time in the school system as both a teacher and a school board member. I know this becomes a very emotional time for parents and students as they are assigned to a new school, leaving the familiar and moving to the unknown. However, I have also witnessed firsthand how welcoming the new schools have been and the students feel at home in no time. All of our schools in this district are wonderful and our students are at the center of all decisions. I also want our school community to know that I take my placement on this board very seriously and consider all the facts prior to making a decision. The same with this redistricting preferred plan, I can't just accept that it is the best plan until I prove it to myself. Therefore, I have asked a lot of questions, as Roger knows. I've read all the survey comments, I've participated in the focus group, I listened to the comments made at the community forum, I studied the maps, and I considered the redistricting criteria." After all of that, I've had some suggestions and some observations and some comments. Number one, I was surprised, as other people were, to learn of the change in the middle school suggestion, and at the same time realizing that the plan presented to the Board would probably not be one of the three scenarios, but a combination, taking into account all of the community feedback. We received many comments which addressed this option from both sides, not wanting to change and welcoming the change. I am also concerned that the utilization of Clay is at 102%, without knowing how many students will choose the option to remain in their current middle school. So I asked about some possibilities, and Matt and Roger answered my questions. I asked about the possibility of leaving Cherry Tree at Carmel Middle School and Forestdale at Clay, to see how many students it would impact, although that isn't one of our criteria. The Preferred Plan would impact 762 students, and not changing would impact 262 students, of course, because that was what was already happening. I also know that this decision would greatly impact the current OPE students who are now attending Carmel Middle School. And I have an affinity to the Orchard Park Schools because I was a teacher there, so it is kind of special. So I asked about the possibility of splitting Forestdale, which we said we wouldn't do at Westfield Boulevard. Those numbers came in as Carmel Middle School would be at 87%, with 15% free and reduced, Clay at 94%, which brings it down off the 102%, with 12% free and reduced, and Creekside at 98%. Of course, that has no change. This is not a firm plan, these are just suggestions that I am proposing, and we'll see how they go. I do understand why Forestdale was redistricted to Carmel Middle School in the plan, taking into consideration the students who are closest to a particular middle school, and would also allow the current OPE students to remain at Carmel Middle School with transportation. Over the years, Orchard Park began at Carmel Junior High, then they went to Creekside, then they went to Carmel Middle School, and now there's a possibility they're going to go to Creekside, Clay, and Carmel Middle School. So being in the middle of this district has been hard for those students. I am also looking into the area in yellow that was used...that used to be Orchard Park students and will be attending Clay Center, and wondering if they could, if we would be able to split Clay Center instead of splitting Forestdale. And I think that would involve around maybe 100 students, making Carmel Middle School around 1,200 students, putting it at about 86%. I don't know about the free and reduced number. I know we said we would not split schools, but that is one area where the Orchard Park students Lexington Farms lives, they exist right now, and that's just another possibility. So thinking about many things, trying to make sure that we've made the best decision for our students, and thinking about everything that we've heard from all the parents. So that's my...that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Do you have any questions, Pam, for Matt or Dr. Bear?
I have so many questions in the back double beep. No, thanks.
Leila?
Thank you, and I do have questions, but I'm going to do those last because I have a lot I want to share. And for starters, I feel very fortunate that we live in a community that values education and treasures our schools, and I'm very blessed to live here, and I love our schools too. Our families and students are very passionate about their schools. Nobody really wants to leave their school, and I completely understand that. I have been in our community for 20 years. And we've lived in two different houses in Carmel, my previous home in Carmel. We lived there for seven years, and during those seven years, we went to three different elementary schools in four different locations because we had a new school that was built. I am thankful that that process has evolved since then. I've served on two different redistricting committees and have been involved in a couple since serving on the Board. In my opinion, this process for redistricting is the best yet, and thank you Dr. Bearisford for suggesting that we use cooperative strategies to help us through this process. I think it has provided our community and the Board the most...the most feedback. Have we...you know, we've been going through this, the Board had certain criteria that we use as our guidelines, and cooperative strategies helped us with these three initial plans, which were used to start the conversation. We've had over 35 focus groups, we...I participated in some of those focus groups, like Pam and the rest of the Board. We listened to the feedback that we'd received at the high school, I was there as well. And in addition to that, I've personally read over, you know, well over 1,000 survey and email responses from the community, and I do value and appreciate what I've heard. There were a few emails that I just want to quickly address, not specifically by name, but there were certain families that shared emails about their concern about an individual child with extenuating circumstances. And that is why they didn't support a particular change. And I want to assure these parents that their concerns have not fallen on deaf ears. Carmel Clay Schools has always considered individual concerns on a case-by-case basis, and will continue to do so because our students come first. And we do have students that just reach out to any one of our administrators, reach out to the principal of that school, and we can get the ball rolling on that conversation. But that happens, and not everybody gets redistricted when there are extenuating circumstances. It's a case-by-case basis, and students do come first. With that in mind, my thoughts are, I do not want to move students just to move students. Like Pam, I need to be convinced it's going to benefit the school as a whole. We do know regardless of the capacity of the school, all of our schools have the same overhead. So it is great to better utilize the space, but we do have a basic overhead for each of our schools. So I'm not convinced that every school needs to be at 88%. If one is a little lower than another, as long as it fits within guidelines, I'm okay with that. Our staff will follow the students, and our students will all be served at each of our schools. I do think our middle school capacities need to be adjusted based on the specific program and program utilization. I do know through this process that Carmel Middle School has some high-intensity programs that require more space, and so I do not think that 1,400 number for the capacity truly reflects what the capacity of the school is, and I would like to see that updated if possible. And after some reflection, I am not totally sold on the benefit of the feeder system. I agree that transitioning to a new school is easier for our staff when scheduling transition activities, and students can attend activities with their friends, and they'll be going to the school with their friends as well. But some of the other reasons we've had the feeder system is we had our SROs. The same SRO at the middle school would be part of the SRO for those feeder schools, so there was a transition there. We're very fortunate that our community supported the safety referendum, so each of our schools will have an SRO. So that need is not present any longer. Our middle schools, we've changed the way we do middle school instruction. We have teams. We have a built-in community of peers, and so I don't feel as though I am so tied to the feeder system. We have Core Plus that helps support the mental health, as well as team-building activities amongst our students. And students will be riding the bus regardless of what school. They're still going to be riding the bus with their same peers at their same bus stop, whatever school they go to. And although many of our students and families think you're going to be going to school with all your friends, typically, and I guess in my case for my three children, once we got to middle school and high school, my kids were not in class with their friends, they all get spread out and they meet new people. And they have done well, and most of our children are very resilient. No map is perfect, and I think the Preferred Plan is a good plan to get us started. We've had overwhelming majority feedback that supports the plan. You know, what I read through, people are very supportive. I think the elementary schools are very well-balanced, and actually returned several neighborhoods that have been moved in the past back to their original schools. I do think the middle schools could be a little better utilized. I fully support the grandfathering of the fifth, seventh, and eighth graders. If I would like to ensure that they have transportation, if possible. A couple areas, Pam noted this green area that feeds into Clay Center Elementary School. It currently goes to Orchard Park. It is surrounded by US 31, 116th, 106th, and College. I myself would like to see transportation provided to those students. Well, actually, I'd like to see Clay Center split, and I would like those students, in my opinion, to go to Carmel Middle School. They live very close, they're within walking distance. I would rather those students not have to cross that section of Keystone, I'm sorry, US 31, to get all the way to Creekside. You know, one of the reasons that we moved Orchard Park out of Creekside is because some of those students had a 45-minute bus ride. I don't like that distance, if it's at all possible to avoid it. So that is an area that I would like to see adjusted. What...a question that I do have, I'm not sure if the small, and I think it's called Governor's...I wrote it down somewhere, Governor Square Apartments that currently feed into Orchard Park. They're right at the bottom, right there at 116th Street. They had been Orchard Park, they're now going to Woodbrook in this new plan. Is it possible that they could go to Carmel Middle School and then continue to feed into, I'm sorry, Carmel Elementary School, and then feed into Carmel Middle School? I'm not sure what that would do with our Woodbrook numbers, if that would really, really underutilize that school. I think keeping in mind with this plan, we've opened up an additional 220 seats in our school- I think keeping in mind with this plan, we've opened up an additional 220 seats in our school district, so none of our schools are going to be at the highest capacity. So, spreading out our students might not look perfect. And to be honest with you, moving 11 elementary schools evenly into three middle schools is not a perfect number either, so there might need to be some adjustments here and there. So, that is what I have to share. Thank you very much.
Lynn?
I echo many of the comments by Pam and Leila. I know that every school district has to do redistricting from time to time to address unbalanced capacity at individual schools and to, to meet the changing enrollment at individual schools. When I first moved here in 2014, the first semester for my kids, we went through the redistricting, and that was a minor one compared to this month's redistricting. I know that as a result of the redistricting, my daughter's Girl Scout troop was split between two elementary schools, and some of my older daughter's middle school classmates will move to another middle school. And one of the major motivations for that redistricting is to, to address the overcapacity at Creekside, and then Creekside became the least occupied middle school among the three. I believe that the root cause of this semester's redistricting is to address the overcrowding on the west side. And as a result, we can see that on the west side, the three elementary schools, and now they became, you know, more balanced, and we also added a Clay Center Elementary School. However, I do see that at the middle school now it's more unbalanced, especially when you compare 1 or 2 percent at Clay Middle to the 79 percent Carmel Middle. From the comments with, the board knew, knows that there are some special programs at Carmel Middle, so I just wonder, Leila mentioned this in her comments, that maybe we can move some of the special add programs for other programs to Carmel Middle, and therefore to balance our capacity. Like other board members, I asked questions. I haven't made any specific suggestions like splitting schools by particular street or whatever. I believe that we are making progress, the redistricting is evolving, so we started with three scenarios, now we have a preferred plan, and at the end, we will have a plan that gets the most support, and that's what I hope we will get there next month. Thank you.
Thank you Lynn. Mike, do you have anything on the phone?
No, I mean, I, I'll keep my comments short because it sounds hard to hear me, but I agree with the comments from my fellow board members about the process and the concern for the elementary schools and their being rebalanced. I know that some of the questions have been, you know, moving areas around to rebalance the middle schools, and I assume that's what Leila's going to ask. So, I look forward to, you know, that revision to the plan. But I want to thank everybody for all the effort they've put in so far.
Thank you, Mike. I think my questions are going to be more focused on better understanding, we're not demographers up here, we don't quite understand all that, but these people are. So, I want to better understand, Matt on the phone, kind of some of the thought process that went into making this preferred redistricting plan? Why the 102 percent at Clay? Why the neighborhoods? I think that there was a method to this. I would just like better to understand the thought process that went behind this. Are you able to hear me, Matt?
Yeah, this is Matt. I'm sorry, I wasn't totally able to understand, just maybe some clarification on how we arrived at the preferred redistricting plan?
Yeah, could you please kind of go into, from taking the three scenarios and the feedback that was given, and then working with our district to construct the preferred redistricting plan, you've seen also some comments and questions that have come back to you from parents and board members. Could you please go into some more detail about the thought process and the reasoning behind this preferred redistricting plan, especially including why bumping Clay to 102 percent utilization, please?
Yes, and I'm sorry, could you repeat the very last thing, so I make sure I address everything?
I just want to make sure that you include the reasoning behind bumping Clay to 102 percent.
Behind Clay being at 102 percent?
Yeah, can you address that?
Okay, I'm sorry, it is a little hard to hear, but I'll try to address it all. So, we put out the three original scenarios to gain feedback on, and obviously we got a lot of comments. On the survey we put out, over 3,500 responses, 5,000 comments, and there's the two meetings at the high school auditorium where we heard comments as well. So, a lot of the feedback we heard was, you know, that maybe we were focusing on balancing the utilization at the elementary schools too much, and that the, the middle school boundaries needed a closer look, and that there were maybe some areas that were having long commutes to get to their, their newly zoned middle school. Specifically, in some cases, the Orchard Park areas that would be rezoned to either Creekside Middle School, well, school depending on, on the scenario, if they were being rezoned to either Clay Center or to Forest Dale with those areas remaining in their current feeder patterns. So, when we, when we took another look following all of the feedback, we saw that if we, if we moved Forest Dale into Carmel, that a majority of the current Orchard Park area would remain zoned Carmel Middle School. And then, of course, in doing that, Carmel would be overutilized if you left Cherry Tree feeding into that school, removing that to, to Clay, knowing that over 80 percent of the students in that area were closer to Clay Middle School to balance the utilization, even though, you know, maybe it, it looks a little imbalanced still. But if you were to flip them back the other way, it's within 1 or 2 percent of, of what we're showing in the preferred plan. So, I'm hoping that helps to clarify. Again, it was a little hard to hear, so please let me know if I, if I missed covering anything.
If I could add a little bit to what Matt said, with regard to the capacity and the 102 percent at Clay, all the scenarios that have been shown have both Clay and Creekside at or near capacity because of the fact that when we feed 100 percent elementary schools and divide, you know, 11 schools into three schools, two of those schools are going to have four, four elementary schools feeding, and Carmel has three. So, as we balance the elementary schools, that guaranteed a change in the middle schools, and some of which you have discussed, but the preferred plan does, does not meaningfully change the enrollment projection at Clay from what it was in the other three earlier scenarios. Secondly, it's, I think, worth noting that our demographic information provided by our demographer would indicate that Clay and, well, the middle schools overall will, are projected to decline rather significantly over, over the next several years, and specifically Clay as well. In fact, we looked at Clay, the, the numbers that we're showing, we're using current students, in other words, and so, but if we, one of the routines we go through to consider staffing for the next year is to kind of roll the students forward. So, if we look at the middle schools in particular, and, and take this year's eighth graders out and then move up the grade level, the numbers that we have, and those students are already in school, so now there will be some people move and so forth, so it's still not an exact science. But Clay, in fact, based on that, doing that routine, will drop below capacity next year. Now, that, that could be offset by, by the grandfathering clause, but we know that's, that's a two-year, and then that's, would be entirely gone, and each year it would, you would lose one, one grade level. So, I think that's helpful to share that information.
Thank you Roger. Did you have something?
I have a question. Roger, since we're talking numbers here, have you looked at what Creekside looks like if we do the same scenario that you just talked about with Clay, since Creekside is currently at 98 percent capacity with the numbers on the preferred redistricting plan?
We certainly can do that.
Okay, we don't have, okay.
Because we were focused at the time on responding to a question about Clay.
Okay. Second question. Go ahead. On those two areas, the yellow box cornered by U S 31, College 116th and 106th, do we have, do we know how many middle school students currently reside there?
We would have that information. I don't have it.
Okay.
I don't know if Matt does or not, but we can certainly provide that.
Are you asking how many students are moving from Orchard Park to Clay Center that are east of 31?
Yes, yes I am.
That is, based on current middle school students, it's 74.
74 students? Well, since you have some, something there with all these numbers on it, do you happen to have the numbers for the current Orchard Park students moving to Woodbrook?
That would be Governor's Square area you were referring to?
Yes.
As far as middle school students, it's 29.
Actually, elementary students.
Fifty, fifty elementary students in that area.
And how many middle school?
29.
29? Thank you.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Go ahead Pam.
Yes, Roger, when we made the exceptions, we said this exception for Orchard Park students would continue indefinitely, and that does not include transportation. Is that correct?
Well, transportation's, we're saying that it's not guaranteed. At the moment, as you know, we have such a severe bus driver shortage is, is the immediate problem, and so...
But if Forest Dale goes to Carmel Middle, then a whole ex-section of Orchard Park students would get transportation?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
If the school is districted.
Except for that 74 that would, that are being redistricted to Clay Center, right?
Yes, but with regard to the transportation, we are, the intent would be to provide transportation to the extent possible, and, and that may mean that in some cases we, I think it very well could mean that in some cases we can provide transportation, in some cases we can't. Now, and, and the challenge there is, is when, when some people get transportation, others don't.
Mm-hmm.
As you can imagine, they don't always understand that. But if you happen, for example, to be in that yellow area that was referred to, going to Clay Center, and you're right across the street from the students that are just north of that that are going to Carmel, then we, one of the things we look at is can, can we, can we bring a bus, you know, basically across the street? If you're clear at the south end of that, you know, that takes, there's, the transportation piece is, is a matter of time and then capacity on the bus, and so, usually in our case, we're going to run out of time. And so, we might be able to pick a, a student up or even multiple students if they're close enough to where a bus is going to that middle school, for example. And so, but until we, and we, we will, depending on, you know, the final solution here, if, if it's based on what we're recommending, then we will most immediately do a survey to find out how many parents are interested in, in going to Carmel Middle School, and then whether or not they would be, only be interested, or in other words, only if they had transportation, or would they be able to transport their student and still plan to go to Carmel Middle School. And so, once, once we get the numbers, we've, you know, it's hard to go very far until you know whether you've got, you know, 100 requests or 10 requests, and, but that's the process that we would go through. So, I want to emphasize, we will provide the very best service that we can. That would, that would be our intent.
Okay, I have two more questions. One, how many students are in, will, are currently going to Orchard Park that will be going to Forest Dale?
Orchard Park to Forest Dale, one second. I believe it is 221.
In that little purple, in the purple area? That's 221 elementary students?
Yes.
And how many middle school students? And then up in Gramercy, is that, I've got the figure 121 students, is that correct?
It's 120 elementary and 58 middle.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is that everything Pam? Okay, for the rest of my questions, I just want to confirm, on the preferred plan, it lists 1,537 K to five students will change, how many of these are Orchard Park, which are going to change regardless?
You're asking how many?
How many?
From Orchard Park would change regardless?
Yeah.
The, the current boundary of Orchard Park is 634 elementary students.
Okay. And then my next question is, I have some concerns about the exceptions. My concern is, while I love the fact that we give so many choices, I'm concerned that we give so many choices and the fact that they're going to go on forever. Forever may not sound like a long time, but that's a really long time, and I know right now we have enough trouble with setting up schools and transportation, so who would be the best to speak on that one, about how that would be handled in five, 10 years?
I'll, I'll give that one a shot. I don't, I, I wouldn't use the term forever because that is a long time, and, and none of us can totally predict the future. The recommendation is based on the current situation where we have 11 schools, and so, you know, if that changed, or if our programming changed, there may be other reasons why we would, you know, that, that could affect that, that decision. We've given, we had some thought about, sometimes you'll put like, say, five years, you're thinking that if, if the child is even in school or even not in school, in other words, if you have a preschool child, if you make a recommendation like that for five years, then you're, essentially you're saying, if your child, even if they haven't started school yet, you know, we'll hold this for the five years. But, so I'd emphasize that it's, it's, we didn't really say forever, because it would be until, you know, three board members decided it needed to make a change. And so, we wouldn't block the board and, and future boards importantly into a decision that, that we'd be saying forever. that we'd be saying forever. We feel confident under the current structure that we won't overcrowd Carmel Middle School. But, because again, you'd have to have all the students that you're talking about, and that still wouldn't overcrowd it, because it has three schools rather than four. And then, secondly, again, demographics can change, but the best information we have says that both Carmel and Clay in particular are going to decline. And so, so we're not concerned about it getting over capacity. What I would emphasize is, and the intent was, to provide choice to parents, to the extent that we feel that we could, to address many, you know, the issues that are being discussed in terms of the balancing, rather than predetermining that we are going to balance it, and there is no choice. And so, if a number of, whether, you know, the school's too far, or whatever the reason is, if we believe that the more we can offer parents a choice in the matter, the better. And we also know that if their choice doesn't work, you have, you always have the potential to make a change. You could even, you know, if you approve this, you might subject that to, basically, if this doesn't work the way we intended, the way, in some way, the way we intended if it's, rather than, you know, the alternative of splitting the school, that we would, of course, reserve the right, or you would, to reconsider that.
Thank you. My last two questions are kind of a similar question. Some of the most comments we've gotten recently on the preferred plan have been regarding the Village of West Clay and also the change in Cherry Tree. We've kind of talked a little bit about the Cherry Tree one, but can Matt or Roger, will you please talk about the, regarding the Village of West Clay?
Yeah, West Clay is a village, in our view, rather than a neighborhood. And by that, I mean, there are 5,000 homes in that village. And so, having them all go to the same elementary school just does not work in terms, it's contrary to the criteria that the board established for us. And that criteria is what we focused on as we developed, ultimately developed this recommended plan.
Thank you. Anything on Cherry Tree? I do have a question about the Cherry Tree boundaries. When you look at that strip across, there's one that crosses Keystone, what's that area right there?
In the corner, where the two roads come together?
Yep.
That's an apartment complex, can't remember the name of it. Is it Carmel Apartments? But, answer your question, it's an apartment complex.
Matt, do you know how many are in that area right there?
I think it's 54, we asked about that one.
Thank you.
How many students are there? Fifty-four elementary and 30 middle.
Thank you. All right. Are there any more board questions? I know that we will have many more to continue. Just as a reminder, this is not a board vote until December 14th. So we definitely have a little, almost a month to be able to ask more. But are there any more tonight?
Yes, I do have a question. If by chance, we are going to be tweaking this preferred redistricting plan to really better utilize our middle schools, so West Clay isn't sitting at 98% when we know the West Side is continuing to grow, and we really need to free up some space, if we're going to be tweaking, when will we see this? And how will we present this? How is this moving forward?
I guess I can take that one, since it's a really hard question. Now, you know, we as administrative team will take the feedback of the board, and we'll go back and look, and we'll also listen to any comments that'll be tonight, and we'll go back and look. I guess I would emphasize that there is no perfect plan. And whatever decisions are made when we draw boundaries, some people are not going to be happy with them, and some are going to be happy with them. I will also want to say that our kids are very resilient, and I've been through several redistricting, and the kids do remarkably well. And we're going to work real hard in the second semester to make sure we do a lot of transition activities, to make it a party, to make it a very positive thing. Sometimes I think the adults struggle more with redistricting boundaries than the students do. But it's because you get attached to your school, and you don't want to leave your school. And I understand that. Another thing is that, I want to address a little bit about splitters, what I call splitters, and that's when you split an elementary school. And like I just said, kids are very resilient, and I have been in settings where we have split, you know, the student body when they transition to another level. I will tell you that that transition is always difficult, and that's why we do so many transition activities each year, moving from elementary to middle, from middle to Carmel High School, and because that's important. And I think you do have some advantages when you take a group, an entire group, from one to the other, because you've spent, you know, six, seven years, or, you know, about six years, where you've developed these relationships with families and kids with each other. And, you know, it's kind of haphazard. Sometimes, you know, kids and their core friends go together someplace, but then sometimes kids and their core friends split. And that can make that transition even more difficult. So I think that's why the criteria was set the way there's, I think there is some advantages developmentally when we do transitions to keeping groups together. And I'm not saying that it's, like I said, kids are resilient, and in those settings, you know, after a semester, it was, you know, by and large, everybody was fine. But there is some comfort in making that transition together, I believe. So, you know, we'll take the feedback that we're getting here, just like we have all along the way. I want to thank Mr. McMichael and Matt Sacks and his team. I don't know if you guys can appreciate this, but I've never been in a board meeting where board members have been able to ask a question about how many kids live in this little spot in a district, and then have an answer within a few seconds. So I really have appreciated their work. We have really worked hard in this process to be clear. And unfortunately, whenever, whatever process we do, you know, communication is always an issue. I had a lot of feedback where people were saying, you sprung this idea on us. And all along, the whole plan was to do these scenarios, pull all that information, and then build a preferred plan from all the feedback that we get and we gathered. I would say that if we would have voted and picked one of those plans, it would have been, the criticism would be, well, you didn't listen to any of our feedback. That's why you're getting so many comments about people like, you know, I was blindsided by this, but on the other side, you're saying, hearing emails from people saying, thank you so much for listening to the feedback, because we actually do read that feedback, and we build things based on that. So it's a great balancing act, and I realize it's tough. But I am thankful for, you know, the partnership and the process, you know, with cooperative strategies. You know, they're experts at GPS, or GIS, excuse me, Matt's going to make fun of me about that probably, but GIS, and they're also very good at logistics and working with transportation and flow and that sort of thing. But they do not know our community. So that's why it's critical that they do those focus groups, and that they work so closely with our transportation people and with Roger, and with really the people that know every uphill and downhill in the district, and to build these plans, because you can't just have a company come in and do, you know, the logistics, because they don't have the background of our community. So it's got to be a blending of the people who have background in the community with the expertise of being able to really efficiently work all these scenarios. When you work in this kind of a process, I think the strength of it is that if you don't have that expert on that side and the community knowledge, you end up missing a lot of different opportunities and options that you could have had, because they're a little more efficient and thorough with the numbers. The disadvantage is that, is you get a lot of options and a lot of information, and then you have to tease through all that. But it's, but I do really appreciate Roger's work and Matt and his team's work, and really our principals have been involved, and our community, and, you know, our teachers all along the way. We've had a lot of input. You all have put in more time as a board on this process than any board I've ever worked with. So, you know, we'll take what we've heard tonight, and we'll turn it around some more, and then we'll make that, you know, get that final recommendation ready. As always, when we do things, we'll put it, you know, we'll put it out on the websites and message it out. I encourage everybody to follow us on Twitter, and anything that Emily over there posts, you know, she's the one who puts out a lot of the information. And, you know, engage that way. So that's my little comments. And we will not have a perfect plan, but we will have the best plan we can put together. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. All right, we will move on to our next portion of our meeting, which is public comment. So the board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to speak regarding corporation matters. However, the primary purpose of the meeting is to conduct corporation business, and public comment will be limited. Please state your name and address when you start your comment. Public comments shall be permitted only as indicated on the registration form. I do want to point out two things on the registration form that's on the back that you filled out. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic. Now, I know this is all redistricting, so I'm pretty sure you're all going to speak on that, but it is helpful if a large group identify a spokesperson who will speak on behalf of that group if you're on one particular area. Comments may not contain any personal complaints against a student, employee, or school official. You will have three minutes. The green light will come on when your time begins, the yellow light when you have 30 seconds, and the red light when your time is up. If you no longer wish to speak when your name is called, you may say that you defer your time to the next participant. Eric Bowles, you're first. You'll go up to the podium and state your name and address. And you can start when the light turns green.
Hello, I'm Eric Bowles. I'm at 2867 Stone Ridge Court, Carmel, Indiana. And I'd like to comment on the changes that were made to the proposed, or the preferred option regarding the Forestale Elementary into the, to feed into Carmel schools instead of Clay, as it currently does. This has been such a deviation from all three proposed plans. And in fact, in the original proposals, only one contained a change to the middle school system, and that was originally Clay Center. That's no longer part of the plan. Most Forestale parents are completely, were caught completely unaware of these changes as it is not part of the three original proposals. The Forestale and Woodbrook kids that play together and are on the same sports teams through Carmel Dads Club and similar organizations, and have grown up together, will now go to different middle schools under this proposal. What will happen to parents living in the Forestale District that have a child attending Clay Middle School under the current preferred option? You're proposing to create a situation by one family that could be forced to have one child at Carmel Middle School and one at Clay Middle School? Or you would have to have the child currently attending Clay Middle School move to Carmel Middle School next year? This does not seem like a good plan. As Forestale and Cherry Tree are the only elementary schools impacted under the change, why was this not listed under the exception section under the plan of, as a specific call-out, that's similar to, that was done for the Orchard Park? And then lastly, having listened to all the comments regarding, to the definition of closer, I realized that I could never find a definition in the literature of closer. Is it by mileage, or is it by commute time? Anyone who knows Carmel knows that north-south is very easy to travel, east-west is not. So I would say that there are lots of places in the Forestale section that although they may be closer to Carmel Middle School by mileage, are not by commute. And so I would hope that the current school board and the Carmel-Clay administration would be true to their word and place Forestale back into the middle school that they currently reside in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Tom Voice? Please state your name and address. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dr. Tom Voice. I live at 5788 Cooper's Hawk Drive in Trails of AVA in Glen neighborhood. I have children who attend Mohawk Trails, children who attend Clay Middle School, and a child who's a freshman at Carmel High School this year. I live and work in the Carmel community as a general pediatrician, and I have some comments here, I'm representing my neighborhood of Trails of AVA in Glen. I wanted to thank the board and the school administration for all their efforts in keeping our schools open and our kids learning during the pandemic. I want to thank you for your efforts with the redistricting. I know this is a, no small task to undertake, and thank you for the chance to speak with you today. I wanted to recognize the need for the redistricting due to some big changes like the closing of Orchard Park, the opening of Clay Center, the increased capacity at the new Carmel Elementary School, and the relatively low enrollment of Woodbrook Elementary School, and the overcrowding that was happening at West Clay Elementary School. I believe that my particular neighborhood and my children were negatively impacted by this proposed redistricting, though. It moves our elementary students from our second closest school to our third closest school, and moving us from Mohawk to Prairie Trace, and that does not really meet our goal. It also results in Clay Middle School being overcapacity, the 102% utilization, as you have mentioned. You know, I wanted to really focus on one of the community concerns. I understand some of the criteria that were drawn up by the district for redistricting, but the common concern about, you know, minimizing impact on our kids this year, I think should be really borne into account. Our kids have had to adapt to a pandemic, to virtual learning, and experienced a lot of disruption in that regard alone. And now, there's going to be, there's going to be many kids who are going to be moved and relocated as a result of school closures and school openings. I would request that Trails of AVA in Glen be kept at Mohawk Trails. I would request that the area of Grand Mercy, which I believe is what you identified as the Forestale, existing Forestale students that would be slated to move to Mohawk Trails, be sent to Westbrook, to be kept with the rest of their Forestale students. That the Orchard Park students that are slated to go to Westbrook, who are, I believe in Governor Square, be perhaps reconsidered to go to Carmel Elementary or Forestale, to be kept with their previous Orchard Park students. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Harris?
Hi, my name's Kathy Harris, and I live at 874 Arrowood Drive here in Carmel. Good evening to all of you. I come to you today in opposition of the proposed movement of Cherry Tree Elementary being a feeder school to Clay Middle with three reasons why I believe this decision is a considerable mistake at this time. First, this plan will put our students in the school, Clay Middle, at 102% capacity. Before our kids even walk in the door, the expectation is that the school will be overcrowded, while conversely, Carmel Middle will be underutilized at 79%. In a time of a global pandemic where we are all being asked to socially distance, I ask, does this make logical? does this make logical sense? Second, I disagree with the logic that this change is being done because it puts the students in closer proximity to the closest school, which is one of the school board's approved goals. While in theory, I completely understand this rationale, in reality, I argue this pro does not outweigh the many cons. For many of us impacted, the time savings you speak of is negligible at best. For example, I am one of the families who will actually be closer to Clay. Do you know how much I'll be closer? Three minutes, a whole three minutes. The three minutes that will take me to go through this statement is what I will save. Is a three-minute time savings really worth uprooting hundreds of kids during this time? And frankly, if this was a goal that was so important to the board before, from the onset, then why weren't Cherry Tree and Forestale part of any of the previous three proposals? Finally, the biggest impact and most heartbreaking of all is the impact this will have on our kids. Our kids have already been through so much, including my current sixth grader at Carmel Middle. They have all missed out on so much. The start of the school year was just plain weird. But our kids' teachers and staff did everything in their power to make it positive, and a huge kudos goes out to all of our teachers and staff. And now, after building friendships, getting comfortable with their teachers and new school, getting comfortable in their new weird environment, getting into some semblance of a new routine, you are going to rip that apart for hundreds of kids to save that three minutes to go to an overcrowded school. In closing, I have been told by a couple of you that impacting the least amount of students was not necessarily a goal of this board, but I suspect your goals were likely put in place prior to a global pandemic. As I have seen in my own workplace, we as a world have been forced to pivot. I respectfully request and frankly expect that this board would do the same. Pivot and adapt to what is right for our kids, and in my humble opinion, that is keeping Cherry Tree and Forestale from switching their assigned middle schools. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Heather Judy?
Good evening. My name is Heather Judy, and I reside at 14110 Warbler Way North in Carmel. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak with you today. I have been a member of the Carmel-Clay community since 1986 and have attended myself elementary, middle, and high schools, now along with sending my kids to these schools. I agree with the statements concerned made by Mrs. Harris here just previously regarding moving Cherry Tree to Clay Middle School and Forestale to Carmel. I am lucky that I actually do have options based on the ages of my kids, but I'm concerned based on the timing of this, i.e. in the middle of a pandemic, and the holidays, along with the fact that many parents may be unaware that this preferred method actually has changed since they assume that one of the three original scenarios would be selected and does not actually affect their children. I kindly ask that the substance of the feedback that is being shared with you be reviewed versus the quantity of survey submitted to this preferred plan. Based on the presentation we just heard, one of the goals was to take into consideration the school capacity. Yet it seems that the point was not taken strongly based on the preferred plan that has been shared. Having one middle school at overcapacity to begin with does not seem balanced. The original three scenarios indicated a much better balance as it relates to the middle school compared to the plan now being proposed. I am also very concerned about the long-term implications for both Clay and Carmel Middle Schools, both for the students and the staff, that many people may not appreciate or realize until it is too late. I appreciate your time and consideration today. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl Monkey? Ricardo Reyes?
Good evening. My name is Ricardo Reyes. I live at 1727 Blythe Street. That's a brand-new street, and I just built my home back in July of this year. I live in the village of West Clay, where I used to rent for four years till my family and I were able to gather enough money and put it all so we can build our construction and the home that we're planning to live in for many years to come. I'm here today because I feel our community is being split, not by two, like it's already been going to two elementary schools for a long time, but now into three. I am very concerned with that. I feel like despite all the feedback we've given in focus groups, online surveys, a letter from our homeowners association, and 16, at least 16 that I know of, of probably about the 80 people that attended your, your community feedback meetings, despite all that feedback, we're still being broken into three. We got together as a community, and we provided options, how you can keep it in the two that we've been apart for a long time. I am very vested in it, and I'm concerned. When people try to talk about the village, somebody may say, "Oh, it's the village." No, it's not just the village. It is a community. And I want to make sure that my kids continue growing up with the kids that are their friends and that are their neighbors for years, and I want it to keep for years to come. So I'm asking to reconsider the splitting of the village into three, look at the options we've provided, and have a dialogue with you. Thank you.
Thank you. John Rendell?
Greetings. I'm John Rendell. I live at 13018 Deerstein Green Street. I have a fourth grader, John, and a second grader, Connor, currently at West Clay Elementary. My family just moved here in 2018 from Atlanta, Georgia. My wife volunteers at West Clay Elementary heavily as a room mom for both kids, and she's also treasurer of the PTO. We live by town and Main Street in the village of West Clay. We selected our home due to a combination of the neighborhood and the school. By the way, we also love wolves and the wolf pack, so like if our kids are acting out of line, we can say, "Quiet wolf," do that little hand sign, and they know what that means, which is kind of cool. But one of our questions, as we've gotten familiar with the school district, is, you know, how will the PTO funds be allocated in the new school? Because currently, PTO funds, which our family and community have invested in heavily since the West Clay Elementary was opened in 2006, have been invested in West Clay Elementary for years and years and years, and those provide tools such as subscriptions, teaching aids, gym equipment, and other items. And that's a community investment in the school that serves our kids. How is that stuff going to be split up at the new school? How are we to realize returns on the investments we made, thinking our kids would be there for a number of years? Secondly, as I have two kids, as I've stated, John and Connor, John is a rising fifth grader, Connor will be a rising third grader, and the exceptions as written would require us to look at a school that has been funded for 14 years by a very generous PTO and a brand-new school that would be starting from scratch. Do I need to choose sending my fifth grader to a school with established PTO funding and investment, and my third grader to a school starting from scratch? So as I look at the solution in the preferred plan, I see that it is moving my kids to a school that's farther away, which is against the stated criteria, and it would break up my family personally, and it would break my neighborhood into three elementary schools versus the current two. So when I look at the preferred plan regarding elementary schools and utilization, I don't think of it as the preferred plan for my neighborhood and my kids or my family, and I strongly urge the board to vote it down unless adjustments are made. Thank you.
Eric Mora?
Good evening. My name's Eric Mora, and I am the father of a kindergartner at West Clay Elementary, and I am also a resident of the village of West Clay. Sure. My address is 13005 Deerstein Green Street. We appreciate that plan has to balance many competing interests, and we know that you all have the best interest of our students and community at heart. And the plan does meet four of its goals to some degree, but as you've heard, it does fail in the goal of keeping our community together, splitting us not across two elementary schools, but across three. Also, for many of us, it doesn't send us to our closest elementary school or even our second closest elementary school, but the third closest elementary school. I moved my family across the country to live in this neighborhood and go to this particular school. Some may think, and we've heard it said, the village of West Clay is just too large to be kept together. Let's look at that a little more closely. We're not asking to be all kept at one school. There are two schools that are neighborhood schools. They have a capacity of 1,500 elementary school students between them. That's okay for us to be split among the two schools, but splitting us among three is just too much, even for a village. And let's talk about the size of that village because there are some misconceptions about the size of the village. I've heard it stated, both in a newspaper article a while ago and again here tonight, that there are 5,000 homes. That's not accurate. There are 5,000 residents. That's people. I think that's where the misconception comes from. There's actually 1,753 residential units, and of those, less than 1,100 are single-family homes. So we are talking about keeping together a few hundred students, I'm sure Matt can tell you exactly how many, at two schools that have a capacity of 1,500 students. Neighborhood matters to us. We and our neighbors value our community, the walkability, the friendships. The neighborhood was designed for this, and the plan goes against this completely. The plan destroys our sense of community and impedes opportunities for children to build relationships. Children want to have meaningful face-to-face interactions with kids they see both at school and around their neighborhood and playgrounds. And I will wrap up on time. The plan serves, a plan that serves more criteria to a greater extent and keeps our neighborhood intact at two schools and balances utilization is entirely feasible. These goals are not incompatible. We know you want what is best for students. So do we. Please give us a better plan. Thank you.
Thank you. We have time for two more comments. Glenn Just?
My name is Glenn Just, and I live at 9897 Liquid Drive East. I'm representing the Liquid Gardens neighborhood. Thanks for putting the pressure on saying I'm one of the last two. I want to thank you first for all your hard work, I can't imagine. And children are resilient. I know that because my four children lost their mom three years ago to a rare cancer, and I just want to acknowledge the teachers and the staff at Forestale, as well as Clay Middle School, who went above and beyond. These are not just educators. These are people who really love these kids, and so that is not in question here tonight, I do not believe. There have been three Carmel Elementary Schools that have been Title I schools, Forestale, Orchard Park, and Carmel Elementary. I'm surprised this hasn't been discussed or talked about, maybe it can't be. But with the redistricting, I'm wondering how many Title I elementary schools will now be in Carmel and where those Title I elementary schools will be redistricted to the middle schools. From what I look at in the redistricting, it seems like the majority of Title I families or students would be at Carmel Middle School. And as I've talked to my neighbors and we've discussed this, our concern is what are the demographics and what are the social and economic situation in that case? In terms of between the three middle schools, how will things, will there be a balance? Or will the majority of Title I families and schools go to Carmel Middle School? And what will that look like in terms of the student populations at each of the three middle schools? And I don't know how Title I, I know that I've heard free and reduced be talked about tonight, so I'm not sure how that plays into determining what that looks like across, across the district. One of the board members said tonight, "The overwhelming majority support the preferred plan." I would love to hear the details about that in terms of what those numbers are and what supports that claim that the overwhelming majority do support the claim, or the preferred plan as stated. I also heard tonight that in the end, quote, "In the end, we will go with the plan that gets the most support," end quote. I want to understand, how do you determine what gets the most support from the community and what that looks like? It's interesting to hear the parents who have talked tonight, and specifically the elementary schools that are being talked about and have the most concern moving forward. Again, I'm so amazed at the teachers and the staff throughout this school district. I'm so privileged that my children, my four children, get to go to school in Carmel. But I would ask that Forestale specifically, where my two youngest children go, still be routed to Clay Middle School, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Megan Atkins?
Hi, I'm Megan Atkins. Address is 930 Chevy Chase Lane in Carmel, and that is in the College Meadows neighborhood, Orchard Park District. I have two sixth graders at Carmel Middle, and I am also the spokesperson for an organization of South Central Carmel families who volunteered to come tonight. So I'm glad I got a chance to sneak in under the wire because we are here to support the plan. We are very pleased with how you heard our concerns for specifically Orchard Park families. The original three scenarios, none of my children, actually Orchard Park was split into three different schools, and some of those going a 45-minute bus ride. We were going to go to Clay, which would add probably about 10 minutes to our commute. So we are very pleased that you've chosen the closest school for the Orchard Park kids, and we appreciate hearing our concerns about that. I'd also like to speak about how overwhelmed I am that you are considering these exceptions. I am a mental health provider specializing in children, and that was one of my, I thought, I really didn't, you know, wasn't really hopeful that we would be able to stay at Carmel Middle, but with the, this changed plan, we are able to. But then my second hope was that you would consider grandfathering both incoming seventh and eighth because that's such a difficult transitional time. It is for everybody, and I acknowledge that. But I so much appreciate your consideration, trying to make this work and have flexibility for our kids and our families to have these choices. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you to those who shared your comments tonight in person. We also would like to remind people to submit the survey feedback, and that goes directly to the board member so that we do read each of those. Thank you. We will now move on to action. Roger McMichael? Permission to advertise a public hearing on additional appropriations?
Thank you. Requesting authorization to advertise for a public hearing with regard to appropriation needed in the education fund as well as the rainy day fund. We previously talked about the rainy day fund, and we're anticipating moving funds from our operations fund to the rainy day fund in part to cover the additional expenses due to the COVID pandemic. And then we, and we also have the education fund, which we often this time of year do an additional appropriation because the budget for the education fund was built about a year and a half ago, and there are changes. For example, after we built that budget, we received 200 additional students, which of course that impacts both our revenue and our expenses. I would emphasize that additional appropriation is not raising more money or it's not affecting taxes. Appropriation simply gives administration the authorization to spend the money that we have. So, so along- So along with this additional appropriation, we also have received additional funds.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the action item for permission to advertise a public hearing on additional appropriations?
So moved.
A second? Thank you. Any discussion? We will now vote. Please vote by raising your hand and verbally. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Let the record reflect, five in favor, zero opposed. We'll now move to Dr. Beresford, resolution authorizing administration to handle work disruptions for employees impacted by coronavirus.
Thank you. Here's two resolutions. I think I'll do them both at the same time, as far as explanation goes, just in the interest of time. But you've seen these resolutions before. We did them when the pandemic started back in March, and those have expired by now. One is authorize the administration to handle work disruption for employees impacted by coronavirus. And what that is, it gives us some flexibility with how to handle our employees whose jobs will be disrupt, may get disrupted. If, for instance, we, if the virus got so bad that we had to go back to 100% virtual where we'd have some workers that could be displaced, what could we do? Either to give them meaningful work that might be different or to, you know, support them in one way or another. So really, it's just to give us some flexibility on how we can work with our employees should this go on. And both of these resolutions recommended that they would be in effect until March 19th, 2021. The second one is authorizing the suspension of policies and procedures in conflict with current law. And where Governor Eric Holcomb declared public health emergency on March 6, 2020, he has executed executive orders. And some of those executive orders may conflict with what our policies and procedures are. Along with that, we also have some guidelines from public health agencies, and then also there can be emergency orders within the local state and even the United States. So this gives us, again, flexibility that we can suspend policies and procedures and rules due to the governor's order or other officials. And these have both been recommended by Church Churchill and Antrim, our legal counsel. So I'm here to ask you to do those resolutions one more time, and hopefully I won't bring them back to you ever again, but I can't guarantee that.
We'll take these, we'll vote on these separately. May I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing administration to handle work disruptions for employees impacted by coronavirus?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Dr. Beresford, you had mentioned, actually I read it in an email that went out to all the employees today with regards to meaningful work if we were to close. Could you just touch on that quickly?
Well, we're working on that kind of creatively, and Dr. Ostrom and Mr. McMichael's have been kind of spearheading that. But the idea is that, you know, if we're in a situation where bus drivers don't have full routes, you know, what other jobs could they do in order to remain on the payroll? That could include maybe delivering meals. It could include working inside the building on special projects or doing supervision of some kind or another. Really, we're kind of open to a lot of, to any creative idea that would be meaningful work for our employee base. We also talked about cooks, you know, some of our food employees. And we will be running some food programming, you know, for, just like we are now, and as we did in the past for our students, especially those on free and reduced lunch. But what other opportunities might there be for them to be involved in special projects around the buildings? We've also utilized training, you know, sent, taking care of some of our training needs during that time. Really, it's just to open up the flexibility and, but again, we want meaningful work, not just busy, busy work kind of things.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We'll now vote. Please vote by raising your hand and verbally. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect, five in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. We will now move into the next item that Dr. Beresford spoke of, the resolution authorizing suspension of policies and procedures in conflict with current law. May I have a motion to approve? A second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now vote. Please vote by raising your hand and verbally. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Let the record reflect, five in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. The next item is recommendation for the board to approve the 2021 school board meeting dates. May I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Pam. A second? Thank you, Leila. Any discussion? Leila?
I just wanted to point out, which I'm happy that we're doing this yet again, that we are not meeting on the Monday, the day before school starts or the day school is in session, that we are meeting on a Wednesday, so August the 11th. So thank you very much for the board, for, you know, putting that together for us. Thank you.
Yes, as parents who have kids in school that night before school is a pretty big one, and I also know that our administration is working really hard right up to the very day, so I know it's good for them to be able to get home a little bit earlier that night. Please vote by raising your hand and verbally. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect, five in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. The next action item is adoption of policy 6146, debt management. Dr. Dudley?
Yes, thank you. So at the last board meeting, I brought this policy, policy 6146, debt management. This policy was proposed by Mr. McMichael and our financial advisors to help with our transparency in our financial dealings, and it is recommended that the board approve this policy.
Thank you. May I have an emotion to approve policy 6146? Thank you, Pam. A second? Thank you, Lynn. Any discussion? All right. Please vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect, five in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. We'll now move to adoption of policy 6147, reserve and liquidity.
Yes, thank you. And this-
Liquidity. That's fun. Say that five times.
And this policy 6147 also was proposed by Mr. McMichael, as well as our financial advisors, in order to make sure that we have that transparency in our actions as far as financial, and it's recommended the board approve policy 6147.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve policy 6147? Thank you, Pam. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. All right. We'll now take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let the record reflect, five in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. We will now move to our report section of our evening and student data. Dr. Dudley?
Thank you. So this evening, I have a very short report on our special education students, the numbers of our special education students in Carmel Clay Schools. And so looking at our special education students, as we look at the total number of students in Carmel Clay Schools is, we have 16,393 students approximately.
Excuse me, Dr. Dudley, we need to check your microphone.
Closer. Oh, there, that's better. Okay, thank you. So we have approximately 16,393 students in Carmel Clay Schools, and about 11% of our students, or 1,790 students, have an IEP or an individual education plan. So that, what that means is they qualify for services through the special education programs in Carmel Clay Schools. And so the way this is broken down, looking at the primary eligibility of our students, we have several different eligibility categories that our students may qualify to receive special education services. They range from other health impaired, where we have 372 students that receive services under other health impaired. Our second largest is our specific learning disability. And then it goes all the way down to our severe intellectual disability and traumatic brain injury, which has our smallest number of our students. You can see the different eligibility criteria, and so they range with our speech and language impairment, our autism spectrum disorder, our emotional disability, our developmental delay, which we have 123 of our students that are eligible for that. And it should be noted that developmental delay is a disability that is only one that students ages three through eight can have that eligibility criteria. That is for our youngest learners, that just need, sometimes they just need more time to catch up, and that's where that DD or developmental delay eligibility label comes in. We also then have our mild intellectual disability, moderate intellectual disability, deaf than hard of hearing, our multiple disabilities, our other orthopedic impairment, and our blind low vision. So you can see the breakdown of our students and their primary eligibility with the most that have OHI, and then also our SLD students are our specific learning disabilities. So how does this break out between gender? As you can see, we do have quite a difference in our boys versus our girls. 68% of our students that are eligible for special ed kids are males or boys, and only 32% are our female students. So looking at how does this break down between our different schools? And so this first chart shows you the number of students that are eligible for special education services, but the number of students really doesn't tell us much other than that's just the total number. So the next chart that I did put in was how it is broken down by percentage based on the population of that school. And so the percentages range everywhere from a low of 7% to a high of 16%. And one of the things that is worth noted here is we do have special education programs spread out across all of our different schools. The only school that does not have an additional special education program right now is our Carmel Elementary School, and that is due to the size and the lack of space that we have currently there at Carmel Elementary School. One of our plans is once we do have the new Carmel Elementary School to come on board is to add a special education program there, and we're looking at adding a life skills program. Currently, our life skills programs we have at our elementary schools, we have at Town Meadow Elementary School and also Woodbrook Elementary School. We have life skills programs at all three of our middle schools and then also our high school. So we're looking at adding an additional life skills program at Carmel Elementary School. As far as our other special programs that we have at our schools, we have our intense behavior programs. Currently, we have those at three of our elementary schools. We have that at Collettwood Elementary School, Prairie Trace Elementary School, and Mohawk Trails Elementary School. We do have the intense behavior program at Carmel Middle School, and that is the only program that Carmel Middle School has in addition to the other special programs. The other two middle schools have all of the other special programs at their middle schools. And then we have the intense behavior program, obviously, at the high school. Some other special programs that we have at our schools, we have our functional academics program, and this is a program for students that need additional intense academic programs. We have that currently at four of our elementary schools. We have that at Orchard Park. We also have it at Mohawk Trails, West Clay Elementary, and Cherry Tree. And then we have the functional academics program at all three middle schools, and then obviously the high school as well. Another special program we have is our early childhood program, and this is for our youngest learners, our students ages three through five. Currently, we have the early childhood program at Orchard Park, at Forest Dale Elementary, at Cherry Tree Elementary, and then also at Smokey Row. We are currently planning on adding the early childhood program to the new Clay Center Road, and the classrooms for early childhood that are specific to the early childhood program are part of the plans of Clay Center Road, so that program will move there. And the functional academics program, we may move that to Clay Center Road. We may not need that because our functional academics program currently at West Clay is a very small program, so we may not need to have that fourth functional academics program currently. Those are those special programs, and then you can see the percentages of, and this is the total number, of special education students at these schools, including students that may come to, from other schools that attend these schools now. So in addition to the special programs that I spoke of, we also have a special program at the high school that is our 18 through 22-year-old program. This is our transition program into adulthood. Students that are eligible for special education services, many, some of our students would can stay to school through their 22nd birthday. And so that 18 to the 22nd, or 22 program is for our students to really teach them those transitional skills into adulthood. And we have both a C3 and a vital four program. Both of these programs are where the students are working in the community. They have support through a DOB coach to have employment out in the community and to learn those skills that they need to be functioning adults. They also learn how to arrange transportation for themselves, and it's really building that independence. And these programs, we, we probably need to bring to the board some, maybe do a workshop at some point in the future on these programs because there's really some great activities that happen in these programs to help our, some of our learners that really need that extra transition. And these are our students that might be currently in our life skills program, and as they're in their fifth year at, in high school or their sixth year, they're really transitioning into that adulthood, and there's some great things that are happening in those programs. You can see that's a very small program, but it's also a very effective program. We also have students that are eligible for special education, also are eligible for related services, some students such as physical therapy, occupational therapy, and also special transportation. Some students may require these different related services based on their needs, and you can see the number of students that have these related services. So what this last slide here shows is our breakdown of our students with disabilities that broken down by ethnicity. And you can see the majority of our students, and this mirrors our population currently, 76% of our students with disabilities are white students. And then you can see it's broken out by multiracial, Asian, Black, and Hispanic students. We have a very small percentage of our American Indian students and Pacific Islander students that are eligible for special education. We do not include those students in the graph since it was such a small number of students. You can see how it is broken down by ethnicity. And with that, I would take any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board?
I do have a question. And it occurred to me as I was reading through this, and I should have asked this before. We have a number of students who go to private school, but they still receive services for speech, or I know at Smokey Row, we used to have some, people who from Our Lady of Mount Carmel that would come in. Are any of those students in this total? And how many students do we have that we deliver services for?
So there's a couple different pieces. So the first question to answer is no. The students that are, that receive services that attend private schools are not in these numbers. These are students that are, the numbers that I presented to you are students that are enrolled in Carmel Clay Schools. However, we do provide, we need to do private school services, and that's where we receive funding from the state for, we receive the grant, and then we need to take that grant and look at the, we manage that for our private school funding. So we do have a private school team, special educators, that go, some go into the private schools and provide those services. And then, as you said, we do have some students that, and these are specifically more of the speech-only students, that they would come to one of our schools, and then they'll receive typically speech services in our schools, in their service schools, or their private school students that are- private school students that are service-only students, but they're not included in these numbers. I can get those numbers for you, but I don't have them right now.
No, I was just asking you that, that's fine. I know we also do that, and we provide that to all of our students in this city, so I was just wondering if they were part of the number that you were sharing.
Yeah, they're not. Pam?
Yes, I'm concerned about the students who don't, who aren't proficient in the English language, who might be Hispanic, or Native American, or of some other group. How do we diagnose those students as special needs? Does it take longer to find out that those students are special needs because they aren't speaking English in the classroom?
So it wouldn't necessarily take longer. However, we do need to make sure that we're not identifying students that are English learners as special needs because they are, they are English learners. And so if we are noticing areas that a student may have, be having difficulty, we have to make sure that it's not because of their lack of proficiency in English. However, then if we do get to the point where we need to look at a student that may need services, we would assess that student in their native language. And so we would make sure that it's not, language is not the barrier here. Lynn, do you have any questions? Mike, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley.
Thank you.
We'll now move to our monthly financial update. Mr. McMichael.
Can you share your screen?
Well, I thought I would.
I don't know. So is this Mike? Is this Amy? It's a team effort.
We didn't spend any money this month, apparently. Oh, guess we did.
There it is.
Thanksgiving years, tiny table.
I've changed it up. I don't think I control it.
If you do know all this, you could just tell us.
All right. I can do that.
You can't.
Well, you have the information, I believe.
Yeah.
So you'll see then that our, first our education and referendum fund, our cash balance is...
Roger, you need to get on the microphone, please.
Okay, so our education fund, referendum fund, our, our cash balance is a little over 1.4 million. This year is about 1.5, almost 1.6 last year, so we're, we're tracking pretty close, and we're not surprised that we're a little less now because we haven't made all the transfers for the impact of COVID. So by the time we get to the end of the year, that will certainly change. Going to our operations fund, again, we're, we're in a negative at this time of the year because those funds are coming from property tax. And so as we spend down the funds until we receive the second draw of property tax in November and December, you know, it'll continue to decline, and as it did last year, we were at negative 1.8 last year. So we are really on track with what we would have projected for this time of the year.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Roger. We will now move on to board members' reports, starting with the 2021 Carmel Clay Schools' legislative statement and common interest. Ms. Fannenberg.
Yes, thank you. Well, first, I want to thank the board, and really the administration. We've put together, I think, a very nice, comprehensive letter based on everybody's feedback. Our letter, which will be sent to all of our legislators that we work directly with locally, as well as the, once we find out who the head of various committees are, well, it'll go to them as well. What I do want to share about the letter, we, our approach is going to be very similar to last year's approach, which was very effective, that instead of giving our legislators a list of to-dos and things that we want, we are going to continue to work alongside them. We've identified several areas of common interest that we can help, help them as a resource. So the areas that we have listed, we've got flexibility and goal in local governance. One of the big things, in addition to flexibility on eliminating some inefficiencies, we have asked for flexibility in continuing with our virtual board meetings, or having participants like Mike, for example, today, being able to participate from, from someplace else, with some type of telecommunications.
And vote.
Thank you, Pam, yes. I'm going to just backtrack a little. This is our letter, we presented our letter today to Senator Bray, the Senate Pro Tem. Dr. Bearsford and I have been meeting regularly, which I'm pretty excited about. Dr. Bearsford has a team of people that he meets with, and we've been working with Seamus Boyce from KGR, and he's been facilitating several meetings. We met on the 16th with Representative Houston, and that went very well. We discussed the letter, lots of areas of common interest. One very huge positive on our behalf is that Dr. Bearsford knows him personally, and so Houston reaches out to Dr. Bearsford frequently on different bills and legislation to see how is that really going to impact schools. And both Representative Houston and Senator Bray are very much in support of public education. Both have indicated that that is a key priority, and we are looking forward to continuing that relationship. The, the state house reorganized on Tuesday, the 17th. And so while we do not know the committee leadership and the makeup of those committees yet, that should be coming in the next couple weeks. Once we do have that information, we will be sending our letter and continuing our meetings and communication. I'm, Dr. Bearsford might want to speak to some of the meetings. Our meeting today, I thought, went extremely well. Dr., Senator Bray really supports what we're doing, is very excited that we have managed to keep our children safe, keep our employees safe, all the safety measures we have taken to be sure we can have our students being educated in the classroom, since we know that is the best place for delivering, for our delivery model. We did express with everyone we've had conversations with is how expensive COVID has been to not only our district, but all districts. But, you know, we could use ours for an example, and Dr. Bearsford touched on it, it's costing us approximately 2.5 million more dollars to educate in this environment. And it's going to be extremely important, since money is tight, that new legislation doesn't have negative financial impact on our school districts. So that was recognized and acknowledged by both Senator and Representative, and so we will be really keeping a close eye on legislation from January when things start rolling out. But we, I thought it was a very good meeting, very optimistic, and I'm encouraged. Senator Bray was really, I mean, just very positive, not only about our school district, but about schools, public schools in general, and very receptive to working directly with us and allowing us to partner with him and provide very good information, not only about our areas of common interest, but about upcoming legislation. Dr. Bearsford might want to speak more about that, because he's been on several calls, not only with the two that I've had, but in some of his other meetings with various superintendents in Hamilton County.
Yeah, thank you. You did a really nice job going through kind of our, our strategy, and, and really, it has been pretty effective. And I will also say that Leila does a really nice job in meeting with legislators, and I think it's important that they hear from the board, because you are the Board of School Trustees, and, and I think that that's meaningful when they see you take the time to, you know, to interact with them like that. One of the things that I've seen, this, which is different, you know, in a positive way, is I think there's a real enthusiasm or a real desire among the legislators to really up the game, the education game of Indiana, that make Indiana a place that's more positive for educators, that, that young people in our state want to be teachers, and they want to be involved in education and making a difference in the world. And, and I think there's a little enthusiasm to keep that going. I know times are tough now, but this is an opportunity really for, for Indiana to separate itself from other states by really valuing, you know, education. So we've been using the, the nomenclature that we want to raise all ships, you know, and, and all districts across Indiana, and also that we want to make Indiana a go-to state, not only for our own kids that want to be educators, but also for educators in other states to want to come to Indiana. And so, and I do think the addition of our new Secretary of Education, Katie Jenner, and was appointed by the governor, and I think we're in a position to really make some positive moves for, you know, towards education. So I'm enthusiastic, and, and as always, we stand, you know, as a, as a place where legislators can get boots-on-the-ground information so that we can avoid any unintended consequences of legislation that would either have a bad fiscal impact on us, or just be a bad practice, or something that might make us take a step back. So we're real happy to serve in that role. So thank you, Leila, and a really nice job.
Any questions from the board? Pam?
Yes, just what district does Senator Bray represent?
Martinville, I'm not sure what district that is.
Okay.
But I know that is where his kids live as well.
South, okay.
And then, Leila, could you remind me, is this letter, is this something the board votes on? Is this something that isn't?
No, we have not voted, well, we have voted on legislative priorities. We really don't have any priorities. We have not voted on this, you know, I will, let me just double-check. I don't want to speak out of turn. We may have. I don't recall. I do know we didn't have it as a discussion item because of where it fell, and so it worked out just fine using it in, as a board report. Let me get back to you on that. We might vote at our next meeting on this.
Okay.
We've already distributed it, at least to Houston and Bray, because we've met with them, and we wanted them to have something physical in advance, and this letter aligned with all of the input from the board members.
Thank you. And once we have finalized it, for sure, for sure, will this be available on our website?
It'll be on the website, and we will have signatures on the bottom.
Great, thank you. Any other board questions? All right.
I might add, as you review that, if you have any concerns or questions or ideas, we need them quick.
Yes, these, we fed all of our feedback to Seamus, and he put this together. So he will do that for us.
Thank you. The Carmel Clay Parks Department, Lynn?
I have one item to report. In October, Carmel Clay Parks and Recreation purchased about 15-acre land on the northwest corner of Carmel. In this month, the Parks Board passed a resolution to name the northwest park Bear Creek Park. So that's it.
Thank you. Very exciting. All right, you are, we'll now turn it over to Mrs. Emily Bauer. We are very excited for a project that's been a long time coming, the Carmel Clay Schools' Communications Plan.
Hello. Hi, everyone, thanks for having me. So the communication mission is, the mission of the Community Relations Department is to tell the CCS story as a valued part of the Carmel community. The district will provide transparent, accurate, timely, and effective communication to engage our community and support the district's mission, vision, and guiding principles. So I inherited from my predecessor the communications plan that I have updated. Once reviewed, I know you guys have access to this, but once reviewed, I, I'm not certainly going to go through, everyone's time to go through every page of this, but it really spells out our guiding principles, audiences, stakeholders, outcomes, our key strategic areas. So again, I invite all of you to take a look at this. Once signed off, it can live on our website. It's very public-facing, nothing we wouldn't want to share with anyone. I'm open to comments and suggestions. I'll go back up. So this will be reviewed annually. It reflects, reflects changing communication needs, incorporates internal stakeholders' input, and considers community needs in various communication channels. As everything in 2020 is going, we constantly are trying to tweak and pivot the way we communicate to people. So I look forward to continuing and building on the strength of In the Loop newsletter. I know that our community really loves hearing directly from Dr. Bearsford. I think that's a special way to communicate directly to our district and community members. I want to use it as a tool to put some special messaging in, highlight important stories around the district. So hopefully, that can be something that people grow to look forward to and appreciate. So the social media engagement has been a huge part of my kind of onboarding and entrance into the district. It's very active, which I appreciate, and I really embrace all of the feedback. I'm sure people are starting to learn that I go, well, this is what I hear, this is what I hear, and I really do try to take it all in. For example, the social media engagement, you can see our spike. When different media reports or just as rumor mills get going, you, there was a day, November 10th, that somehow something got out that we were about to close, or go to 100% virtual, and it was not true. And so I, without any sort of graphic to accompany it, simply stated, we heard the rumors too, this is not true. And you can see on November, ooh, this was our hugest spike that I've kind of cycled back through previous months and about a year, honestly. And it was, I just was shocked. But it really spoke to the power of speaking directly to the community, and not even via email. This allows for people to share even more readily than just forwarding an email, obviously. And then one of our success stories that also really just speaks to the power of social media is our substitutes. I won't steal Dr. B.'s thunder for what might be coming in his announcements, but our, our Carmel Moms is a very powerful, wonderful group on the internet, and we, I look forward to using their voice as a tool. And we had a wonderful mom who pointed out, do you want your kids to stay in school? Let's, let's try to substitute, let's, let's find different sub opportunities. Through the sharing of that, it, I mean, we got 50 applicants that are now coming in, and the post that I did, just to thank in all sincerity our community members for that work, are, you can tell the people reached, you can see is 18,496 at the time I screenshotted this, are normal and... back through previous months and about a year, honestly. And it was, I just was shocked. But it really spoke to the power of speaking directly to the community and not even via email. This allows for people to share even more readily than just forwarding an email, obviously. And then one of our success stories that also really just speaks to the power of social media is our substitutes. I won't steal Dr. B.'s thunder for what might be coming in his announcements, but our, our Carmel Moms is a very powerful, wonderful group on the internet, and we, I look forward to using their voice as a tool. And we had a wonderful mom who pointed out, do you want your kids to stay in school? Let's, let's try to substitute. Let's, let's find different sub opportunities. Through the sharing of that, it, I mean, we got 50 applicants that are now coming in. And the post that I did, just to thank in all sincerity our community members for that work, are, you can tell the people reached, you can see is 18,496 at the time I screenshotted this, are normal engagement level, or people reached maybe around 2,000. So it's, it was just a tremendous sign that people are looking to feel a part of what we do here. And I hope to capitalize on that with more social media in that manner. So of course, communication is not just social media, though it is a large component. It is going to be my role to continue building our school messenger, to continue to work with schools, to streamline the process, train staff on best practices. We want to really consider the delivery. Most parents are receiving communications on their phones. What does that look like with opening PDFs, different links? We're trying to really make sure that we're thinking thoughtfully about what goes out and how parents are receiving that. And lastly, in the same vein, be really conscious of the quantity of messages our families are receiving during the time of COVID and redistricting and 2020 and the beginning of school. That was what I heard the most when I started was, when you send it, when you send it, when you send it, everything's important, but how can we kind of help parents really understand what we need them to pay attention to? We're going to keep making videos. This is a wonderful screenshot of Dr. Beresford. And this was, again, just that direct appeal. You know, I hope to always be able to tell the stories of our students and let people see behind the curtain a little bit of what goes on inside our schools. But again, right now where we're at, I think people are really appreciating just that direct communication. And this was just a great opportunity for Dr. B. to talk directly to our district, and it was viewed nearly 15,000 times. And that's just on my channel, so that's not if it was shared anywhere else. And of course, the unnecessary emergency communications. So as part, as part of the CCS Emergency Preparedness Plan, I'm going to continue to establish and update emergency protocols and share with internal and external stakeholders, prepare communication drafts for principals to use at the building level, for non-district-wide emergencies, emergencies, or those urgent messages, and consult with stakeholders to manage emergency communications as needed. So it's going to be my hope that I am on call darn near all the time for anything that does come up. But through a, some that have already been handed to me, which were very handy, and then just as things come up, starting to really continue to build that kind of well of information with a bit of prepared language, because obviously when an emergency comes up, it's our top priority to make sure that any first responders and the principals can have their full attention to where it needs to be, and I can be that resource to help communicate with the people who need to know about it. And that's it. So that's a, hopefully a brief overview. I really encourage everyone to take a look at the, the actual plan itself, and then let me know what kind of feedback you have. Are there any questions? Am I?
Thank you, Emily.
Yeah, of course.
Since you didn't get to brag on yourself, I will for just a second. So Mrs. Bauer is our new communications director who started in September, so there's nothing going on. So we love that we threw you into the deep end, and you've kind of really been able to run, and we're really excited for all the things that you've already done. Questions from the board? Lynn?
I have a question about, at the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned the mission of the Communication Relation Department, so I just want to know more, because I guess that's the first time maybe, we not often talk about this unit in districts, so I just want to hear more about it.
Yeah, so the actual mission itself, I inherited, but I, I agree with. And as was kind of presented to me when even applying for this role, I really just hope to be the storyteller of what happens. And so, again, right now, I feel like it's really appropriate that our story is what we're doing, what we're going through, what is redistricting, what is our COVID response. I really appreciate my role as trying to take in what I'm hearing from different social media, and I'm really encouraging and pleased to see how many people are starting to reach out to me directly, just saying, hey, have you heard about this? Not to replace any sort of direct communication to Dr. Beresford, administrators, or yourself. But yeah, I just, I think it's nice to have someone in my role, me or otherwise, that can help kind of translate everything between the administrators to the community, and then what's happening in our schools to the community. As I've gone in, I'm a parent myself, and I just, everything I see, I just want to make sure I put out, again, abiding by that, how much are we sending out all the time? But I'm just so excited to, to see it from both that communications professional and parent role, so I can continue to kind of tell all the stories we want when we're not in the middle of a global pandemic.
I see. Are you the only staff in that department?
Um, I believe I might be the only one of that exact, but, you know, we always have backup, as you might call it. So again, that like, school messenger, I'm very fortunate, I think there's four other that have the capability to send out emergency, for example, for the SMS or weather. And then on the building level, there's always people that can do that. So, you know, for example, a build, a principal has an incident in a classroom. I want to encourage that principal, obviously, to communicate in a tone and manner to their own community. That's crucial. I don't speak for, you know, principal landscape, but if she calls me and says, hey, can you take a look at this? I want to make sure that it's appropriate, or on-brand, or anything like that. I can be that resource for that level. But when something's being spoken for the district or for Dr. Beresford, I appreciate the opportunity to do that directly through my own words or in collaboration with Dr. Beresford.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah.
Dr. Beresford, I had the great opportunity to be part of a hiring process for this position, and you said something that I'm going to try to jog your memory, is about how Carmel Clay Schools can be their own media outlet. Can you remember that, and can you kind of talk a little bit about that?
I do. A lot of times, especially in former years, the news media kind of ran our lives, where we'd, we'd have to react a lot to news. We still do react somewhat to the news, but now, in this day and age, we can actually communicate directly with our, our, our people, you know, directly with our families. And, and as you even saw tonight, that communication is key, you know, in our business. And actually, Dr. Yu, you were, we wanted to do this report because we wanted you to have the communications report before, before your last board meeting, because you stressed that along the way, that you wanted us to really work on our communication skills. And so, and that's what we've tried to do, but it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing thing. And, and Emily has been a really nice addition to our, our team, and she is running solo with a lot of collaboration with other people. And, but, you know, she brings to the table a lot of strength in that immediate communication in the social media world, which frankly, I, I don't want to even go into. So it's nice to have somebody that's knowledgeable and professional at that. But we're, communication is always going to be a priority, and, and we're always going to be working to get better at it. And, you know, no matter how hard we try, there still seems to be, you know, miscommunication here, and we have to try to, try to mitigate that. But, but as you can see, the, the communication plan itself is very complex, because we're not only communicating with our, our families, our, our external public, but a lot of, big part of our communication is internal communications with our teachers and our staff and our administrators. And so it's really a, a huge network that, that we're working. But it is a different world now, where we can actually just communicate directly and become the news source for, for our families. And it's been interesting that even now, like when something will pop out on the news, we'll get an inquiry from our family and say, is this true? What's the story? And then when we say what it is, they go, huh, okay. So, because journalism is a little different when they started using Facebook as a source. That was just a little dig, sorry.
Yeah. Emily, you did great for your first presentation, and we are very excited to have you join our team.
Thank you so much.
I don't know, that screenshot was kind of questionable. We'll, we'll talk about that tomorrow.
I encourage everyone to go follow Carmel Clay Schools, so we can make sure when you have questions, you're coming directly to the source. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will now go to the superintendent's report.
I'll try to be the closer. I'll be a little, I'll try, try to go quick, but that's not my nature. But hey, I wanted to let everybody know that tomorrow, we're welcoming blue Colts mascot to help pass out our pizza parties in a bag. So our food service people are really knocking it out of the park right now. And for any families that are interested in the Grab and Go Meal Bag Program, so this is something that families can do, just buy this meal to go, and it's all bagged up, and the kids can take them with them, take them home, or a similar program for virtual learners, be sure to opt in on our website under Lunch Tools within the Parents section, and then enjoy a pizza party at home. So it's always usually, our, our food service puts out some really, really good stuff. Business Department at Carmel High School is holding a virtual day of coding for fourth graders across the district. It's great to see our older students mentoring our younger students, and everybody can be a positive influence. And they're doing that virtually, of course, to, to react to our environment. And I've been real impressed with the way a lot of our high school programs and kids are figuring out how we can do things instead of worried so much about what we can't do. So that's a, that's a credit to them. Last week was Education Support Professionals Day, and we want to do a shout out to our instructional assistants, our special services folks, our computer technicians, our interpreters, our job coaches, our ad-vocatus tutors, all of our support teammates. And I want them to know that we appreciate them and are a vital part of our team. Also want to do a shout out to the 2019-2020 Highlight, that's the school newspaper at Carmel High School, and they won their ninth consecutive National Pacemaker Award from the National Scholastic Press Association. Now, I used to be a newspaper yearbook advisor back in the day, and this is really a big deal. The Highlight was just one of 19 Pacemaker Awards in the country, and, and in the news magazine category. So for them to get nine in a row is amazing. It's usually, it's, we often call it, in the biz, they call it the Pulitzer Prize, Pulitzer Prize of scholastic journalism, because it's so prestigious. Now, this is a quote from the advisor, which I really loved. He said, "I often tell my Highlight kids, 'We do what we do with our student readers' best interests at heart. Awards are simply the byproduct of that goal." And that really is their attitude. We want to do a good job, and, and they focus on doing their very best job, and I think success kind of takes care of itself. So that was good. I want to throw kudos out there to our elementary students who are taking their Chromebooks home every night for the first time, so they've been practicing that here for a couple of weeks now. And, you know, we wanted to start practicing in case we have to do a virtual learning day due to weather, and, and they've just done a wonderful job taking care of their equipment and establishing a home for their Chromebook to charge at each night. And I'm just so proud of them for being so big and grown up, and I'm, and I'm also proud of their families who may be supporting that and making sure that gets done. So, well done. And that's a, a new experience for our young, young ones, and they're just knocking it out of the park. I thought I'd kind of close down my report with some stories from the Carmel Clay Schools' family. And this one just, these two just kind of tickled my, my, just tickled me. "My husband and I wanted to submit kudos for our son's teacher. It's been clear to us that she is super dedicated to making virtual learning fun and an educational experience for her kindergarten students. The classroom routine that she's established, the videos and special assignments she's provided, the fun virtual playdates that she's come up with to keep the kids engaged socially has been impressive, very impressive, and I'm sure super time-consuming on her part to create so much content. We're grateful to have her as our son's teacher during this exceptionally challenging school year. We'd like to make sure she's recognized for all the hard work she's putting in every day." And here's, here's, here's another one that, that made a lot of us smile. "My son is in first grade, and I just want to tell you how lucky we all feel to have him under your wing at the West Clay Cafeteria. Yesterday, he came home shouting it was Feast Day tomorrow, and told us that you were having pumpkin pie. Right before he went to sleep, he asked us to help him remember to get the holiday meal for his lunch choice the next day. And he said, 'Tonight at dinner,' he told us about it, 'a cornbread cookie, cranberry jello, mashed potatoes, chicken noodle soup, and of course, the pie.'" He said he mentioned it in his prayers, and he told our neighbor about it, and when he came off the bus, he said it was the best meal of the year. "Thank you for bringing us all this so much joy. I can't imagine that you've had to pivot quite a bit this year, but you've kept the sparkle for sure. He felt welcome at the school, first through the welcome of the kindergarten note you sent to each child, which is just amazing. Please accept my thanks to you and your team." Which brings us to the bell ringer. So, and I'm starting the bell ringer off with a, a note that I, I, I found, and it just says, "I'm thankful for my family, friends, and teachers," and I'll add "staff," "because they are there for me. They are so nice, kind, amazing, beautiful, and I want to let them know that." And my bell ringer is to share how thankful I am for our CCS family and our community. And in the spirit of Thanksgiving, I shared with our staff today, I think Leila made a reference to that, that sometimes I just get around, running around so fast, I don't settle down and just take a breath and really appreciate those around me. And, and I, I just told all our staff this morning, I said how thankful I am for our team, and so I wanted to see if I could keep that going tonight. And so what I shared was that we are one day away from making it to Thanksgiving break, and I can't believe how far we've come since last March in this crazy environment that we're in. "And together, we have found ways to meet challenges, to solve problems, to create new ways to connect with our students and our families, so our kids can learn and grow." And that's in our 100% virtual, our hybrid, and our in-person programs. Now, I know we're all concerned about the, the rising numbers of positive COVID-19 cases, and, and it's really been, you know, kind of a, it's moving from a low-grade fever to really starting to weigh heavy on a lot of us. And while we have the rising numbers, state and local data reflects that the spread's not real prevalent in school, in the school building. Our in-person and hybrid programs are feeling the impact, though, of increased quarantines from outside exposures and from contact tracing when a positive case comes to school. Now, we haven't seen many students or staff test positive for the virus who have been quarantined through contact tracing, so we're, we're having to deal with a lot of the absences. I also shared with our staff that, RP, I shared with our PTO, and then again, in the letter this morning, that it's probably more likely that we'd be forced to move to 100% virtual due to staffing issues relative to quarantines and the virus. And when I said that, I didn't really anticipate anything, and as Emily reported, you know, once you hit social media with from a bunch of our parent, from a few of our parents, and I really owe the, the, the one mom who really catapulted it, I probably need to buy her a lunch, but a week later, we have 50 new subs lined up, you know, to, just to support our schools and to try to keep them going, because of the big shortage we have in subs. That's just another reason, you know, we love our community. So we're in this setting, and then the obvious question is, what's next? You know, where do we go from here? And where we're going right now is we're going to continue to stay the course with our current learning programs, and we'll continue to follow the guidance from our, our medical community. We're in communication with the Hamilton County Health Department almost daily. We're in close contact with the Indiana State Health Department at least weekly. And then beginning September, December the 2nd, all Hamilton County school districts will meet with the Hamilton County Health Department each week, and we'll be sharing information and receiving guidance. We are prepared to pivot if we're directed to move away from our current online, our in-person learning programs. Our, our staff is ready, our, our administration is ready, and, you know, we're, we're ready to go with whatever environment that we're faced with. So finally, I shared with the staff and now with you that I know many times this year it's felt like we've been leaping into the fog and not quite knowing where we would land. And that was mostly because we were leaping into the fog and we had no idea where we were going to land. But we leaped together, and we landed, and we figured it out, and we kept moving forward, and we have come so very far. When I think back to the last March to where we are today, we've come very, very far. We've leaned on each other, we've taken care of one another, and we've been there for our colleagues, the ups and downs of this journey, and I'm very confident to tell you tonight that together, we will continue to meet these challenges just one day at a time, and, and we're, we're going to keep, keep moving. So I hope you have a tremendous Tuesday tomorrow. I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving break, and please know that I am very, very thankful for you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, tomorrow is the last day of school for Thanksgiving break. Classes will resume on Monday. December 14th, we'll have a regular session, School Board Meeting, and winter break will be December 21st through January 4th. January 4th will be a teacher workday with students returning on January 5th. May I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Second? All those in favor? All right. Meeting adjourned.